Welcome, this is the June 11th, 2025, meeting of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals. It is being held via Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. I'll call the meeting to order at, what is it? Just about seven o'clock, isn't it, folks?
Seven oh one.
Okay, at seven oh one. Let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please raise your hand and say present. Jim Royer.
Present.
Jenny Bartlett.
Present.
Pat Jackson.
Present.
Ginny Zakatinsky.
Present.
I don't see Susanna. Okay. Keith Suzie.
Present.
And our administrative assistant is absent. And I'm Lynn Ryan, and I'm present. Okay, let's see, what's first on the agenda is continuation of a public hearing, a special permit and site plan approval for a home-based contracting business. Is it 136? I, for some reason, I didn't think that was the number, Central Street. I'll call the hearing back in order. Do we have the petitioners in the audience?
No, we do not.
Okay, they have 20 minutes. Maybe we can do some other things. How about the approval of last month's minutes? Someone care to make a motion?
Sure, a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting. April, May.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, thank you.
Second.
Thank you for the second. I'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
I'm gonna skip you, Jenny, you're gonna be abstaining, correct?
Correct.
And Keith Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so they're approved unanimously. Do you have any warrant information to give us, Jenny?
No, I do not. Have not seen or heard from Leanne. So we're still same as, same as we were last month.
I'm gonna skip communications received. Any unforeseen issue that may properly come before the board? Are you? Is, does anyone have anything that they'd like to bring up to the board before we continue with the hearing? Hearing nothing? I'll skip the reorganization for now and ask for availability for next month's meeting.
Think it's fine, yeah.
Okay, of the folks that are present, is there anyone that cannot attend next month's meeting?
Only if I can't get onto the internet.
Well, you've got a phone, Jenny.
I don't use the phone.
Okay, I'll consider that all. All right, let's see, what can I talk about to you that happened last night without getting into stuff that has to do with the hearing? I mentioned to the others, Peggy Stone was on there. She mentioned that she's going to put out a citizen's petition and try to get it signed. It looks like we may be having a fall town meeting. And she wants to put on there for having a drive-through. The folks are, oh, the planning board is in the process of updating, and they talked about how they were gonna go about updating the bylaw. And they were concerned that, you know, they couldn't just update the whole bylaw and present it in a town meeting. We would be there for three weeks. So it appears that they're gonna try to do it in sections, and they're gonna form subcommittees and have different people asked to be on subcommittees. And if someone has an interest from the planning board, from the ZBA, that might be something good someone could do. They also talked about, let's see, I do have some notes. Sometimes you go into, I don't know, you go into the planning board and there isn't much to be had, and then other times there are. Oh, they talked about ADUs. I guess a lot of communities have filed their ADU bylaw with the state. And some things are coming to light that may require us to make some changes to our ADU law. More to come. They talked about Solomon Pond Mall. And they talked about the fact that they're working, there's a working group with Marlboro. And they have some interest from some parties to do something down there. One of the things they did say was that both Berlin and Marlboro do not have warm fuzzies about putting housing in that unit. They did talk about some kind of light manufacturing. And there was some concern about being able to keep some of the retail stores and combining them with light. In other words, would Macy wanna be next to some kind of light manufacturing? So again, that's something they're still working on trying to revitalize. The mall, Solomon Pond Mall. They talked about two subdivisions that are coming up. One is off of Turner, I guess, I'm not aware of it. And the other is off of Central Street. I think some of you are aware of that. It would be across the street from me, and it would be to the right-hand side of the Doggy Daycare. There would be an address, and it looks like they wanna put six houses in there. Really high high-priced homes. There is the rail trail through there, which is an issue. There's the issue of they need to, they wanna put a right, they do have a way of getting into the property. It's on the other side of the Doggy Daycare. But that's opposite hill to get into the back. They were talking about building some kind of a bridge across the rail trail, so we'll, we'll see what comes out of that. But I think it's gonna take a lot of work to get something in there. I suggested that anyone that wants to buy a home down there, go there between Monday and Friday, between eight and five, and hear the 12 to 24 dogs barking. Because I can hear them, I can't imagine what it would be like for the folks in that. And I think, yeah, they're working with Jane Syrick of the CMRPC to redo the bylaws. So if you guys have come across things, I know, Jim, you have a special interest in Keith. You've mentioned a couple of times things that you're concerned about. I would be sure to let them know. I told them about the whole idea that any parking for business that has five or more spots has to be hot-topped. They're saying that maybe they don't want it hot-topped all the time. I said, whatever you do, please do not make it at the discretion of the zoning Board of Appeals. Because that leaves us in legal limbo. And again, you know, I told them that we needed to, we can't change the bylaw, we have to go by the bylaw. We are very strictly adhering. I have decisions from council that we can only give dimensional variances.
Talking about going to the right side of that property, it's all wetlands.
Yep.
There's a pipe, town pipe flows into it.
Well, not only that, but there's the whole issue of frontage for that house. It would diminish the, it would have to be 40 feet wide. So it would diminish, you know, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of things that are gonna have to be worked out in order for that to come to fruition.
They've tried to put stuff in going to the left side of that building, a driveway going up over to the back.
Yeah, that was some church group, if I remember correctly.
There you go.
They wanted to build what I considered more or less a conference center where they could hold all kinds of meetings and stuff. So they backed off of that. And I haven't heard any more about Up and Back of Me. I wonder, was it maybe three years ago, somebody bought it, and they were all hot to trot to build Up and Back of Me? But I, I was considering the gentleman that bought it left a card in my mailbox saying, if you have questions, call me. I've been tempted to call and see what progress he's made. Or if he, like my neighbors across the street, have become very disappointed. You may also all notice that my son and grandson were at the house Sunday. And I don't, I no longer need a goat for my front yard.
Looks lovely.
Yeah, it does.
Well, that's, you know, right on track to mow, it can mow anything.
Is that property behind you still owned by the guy that owned the restaurants?
To be honest with you, I don't know, because I didn't know whether or not he owned a restaurant.
Yeah, well, he was growing food up there for the restaurants, and the Asian pear orchard. And he owned a construction company.
Could I ask, Jim, do you have the number for Mr. Bernie handy?
I have him on the phone.
Well, yeah, I want somebody to call him and just, you know, mention the fact that we're gonna close down in 10 minutes. Give him a fair shot. I mean, I think they're nice people, and I, you know.
They are.
I don't see their number on the application. I see the, their architect's number.
I've got his number. Calling him right now. Hi, you gonna be on this meeting tonight?
Not yet, but we haven't gotten the Zoom link yet.
Haven't got the Zoom link?
No. I mean, did we go off last week's link? Sheila said she looked it up, never mind, Sheila is the one that does all the.
Yeah, MyTownGovernment.org, okay? And go into the agenda.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Backslash zero one five zero three.
Zero one five zero three, okay.
And then you'll see, it'll come up with all, and we should be right at the top. And inside the agenda.
This is start before that.
Meeting start. When's the, when's the meeting start, Lynn?
The meeting started at nine o'clock. We opened the hearing.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I'm sorry. And we usually try to give folks 20 minutes to get here. And as a courtesy, we're giving you a call and offering you the opportunity to join us.
Okay, awesome, all right, we thought the meeting started at eight, I'm sorry, Lynn.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll be there in two minutes.
Okay.
Now, how did you get his number, Jenny?
I worked on years ago.
Ah.
In the orchid trailers.
Jenny never deletes any numbers out of his phone. He's got numbers, he's got numbers in that phone from 1972.
That's because the phone is from 1972.
I don't know.
Because I have one of them too.
The town bought this for me. Nobody wanted it when I left.
Well, I'll tell you, I have an old flip phone, and, well, I got a newer one a couple of years ago because it had to go up a couple of Gs, or it wasn't gonna be able to work anymore, so they gave me a free phone. But I have a flip phone. That thing has dropped, it has been run over by a bicycle. I mean, it's indestructible.
Lovely weather, more rain for the weekend.
Thirteen Saturdays in a row it has rained. This will be number 14.
Better than a drought.
Yeah, that, that, that's true. There is still a drought on the Cape, though.
I saw that, yeah.
One of the things that they were talking about last night just in general was rats. And I thought I was gonna die. Tim Wheeler was talking about all the rats he's had on the farm and how he's thinking of getting a dog, and I'm thinking, oh my God, do they know how to get over the hill?
Why, is there overabundance of them this year or something?
There's been an overabundance since, since COVID.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, the town, I know the town offices, they were putting out extra traps around there, and I guess they were, the school had them running around in there, and.
But I mean, these, these aren't mice, these are rats.
Yeah.
I got mice that'll come in after I shut my lawnmower off and have babies. And the next time I go to use it, I got little mice going everywhere.
I've cut two rats out here at my place.
Oh, wow. You thought you were safe in the country.
Well, the apple orchards, everybody, the rats like those places.
Well, I guess when, when COVID hit, you know, all the restaurants closed down, and.
All their food source was gone, huh?
Yeah, so they spread out, and they're all over the place now.
I had two rats. They came with some hay that Moe across the street had brought down from Maine. And I had a bird feeder out in the front. And they liked the bird feeder. So I got one of those humane traps and trapped them. Now, it is against the law, so don't quote me. But I moved them up 495 and let the first one go. Now, my husband rode with me. I went and got the second one. Well, the first one, I don't know, must have been a female, cuz she was nice. The second was, was ornery, okay? I mean, just ornery. And they were huge, you could put a saddle on them, okay? So I put it in the back of the car, and it's kissing and biting at everything. I let it out way up on 495 in the woods someplace. We're driving back. My husb, I was driving, my husband puts his arm over the back and tiples back my back. I thought I was gonna die. I almost had an accident.
Lynn, the panelists, the petitioner has joined us, and I promoted them.
Thank you. Are you with us, Mr. Byrne?
Sounds like they're doing dishes.
I'm trying to, I'm sorry.
He's here, but not here yet.
Video is on and microphone is off.
Well, the video looks like the ceiling.
Microphone's on now.
Can't see if they can see, see how it's there. It's unmuted now.
We can hear you.
I can't, we can't hear them.
Can, can anybody hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't hear you, we're sorry, we're late too.
Well, you just made it.
There it is. Okay, can you hear us now, or can?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, gosh, okay.
All right. I'm sorry we're late. For some reason or another, I thought the meeting started at eight, so I'm terribly sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Well, you can thank Mr. Bartlett for giving you a phone call, because we usually leave, give petitioners 20 minutes, and then we close down the hearing.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
You're welcome.
We, what we're seeing is just not you.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Where is your camera facing?
Well, it's here, right, the Google Chrome, it's facing us, if I pull it down, there's there, reflect, but that's just a reflection. Hello? Hold on. We are.
Especially in case you have to show us something. It would be, well, if we establish where the camera is.
Camera is here, oh, turn the camera around. Do you know how to turn the camera? How do you do? Okay, I'll keep working on that. Settings, camera.
Well, mostly what we're considering is, have you taken into consideration, and do you have resolutions for the issues that were raised at the last hearing?
Okay.
So you're on.
Okay, so the issues that were raised was that you needed a letter from Conservation and Board of Health that they were, that they signed off.
Yes.
And so they, they both, I believe, have signed off in, in order for this to proceed. The, I think the other item was that the the barrier, if that's not the right terminology, the visual barrier between ourselves and the neighbor, it was not on the application. I believe that we put that on the revised application at the back of the building that was going to be constructed. And also where the house is going to be torn down, right there from the driveway to the, to the bushes. It's about 25 feet that would also, we would construct, or we would plant a barrier of arborvitae, and probably more than likely, I would put up a six-foot fence there as well, just for security. And then the other issue was, I believe, which truck we were gonna designate for landscaping? And then the other two trucks were just gonna be used incidentally for landscaping and primarily for farming.
Well, can I ask you? You, I take it that you have read the section for home-based contracting business, correct?
Yes.
Do all three of the trucks have the name of your company on the side of them?
No. One of them has Berlin Orchards. One of them has Jard Burn, two of them have Jard Burn Landscaping.
Okay, let me just read to you the section about the trucks.
I don't know where the.
Okay, it's section 540 dot six. The number and size of vehicles stored or used on the property that are in addition to resident and employee private vehicles shall not exceed the number and size specified in the, in section 541, Table of Home-Based Contracting Business. Any, any vehicle displaying the name of or any advertising for the home-based contracting business shall not be considered a private-use vehicle. So in other words, if you have two trucks that have your name or and advertising for your business on the side of them, that constitutes a vehicle for purposes of a home-based contracting permit. The other thing is the weight. Do either of the trucks that you're talking about, are they in excess of 26,000 pounds?
No, they're not.
That's the registered wa, weight, correct?
Yeah, yes. They're, they're not.
Okay. Could you tell me what vehicle they are?
One is a Ford 550 with a extended cab, and that is the one that would be used primarily for the landscaping. And then there is another Ford 550 single cab that would be used for incidental landscaping. And then there is another truck, a Ford F-350 that says Berlin Orchards on it, and that would.
I, I mean, my colleagues can chide in, but if it says Berlin Orchards on it, I would assume that that is agricultural. The only concern I have is that the other two trucks have advertising or the name of the business on the truck. That constitutes a veh, a business vehicle for purposes of the home-based contracting business. So you have two vehicles, up to 160,000 square feet, you can only have one. So you could have more, but it would require that you would eat, I know you have a lot of land in back. Okay? You would either have to take a section of the back and add it to the front, or combine the two lots in order to get if, if you have greater than 160,000 square feet and greater than 300 feet of frontage, you can have two registered vehicles, but two registered vehicles is the maximum. You also have, do you have a trailer?
Yes, I have two trailers. One of would be used primarily for landscaping, and then the other one, we would use it for primarily farming with some incidental landscape work. It's kind of a backup trailer, really.
Okay, well, you are allowed one trailer that's 1,200 pounds or less.
12,000.
That's, I'm sorry?
12,000.
Right. I'm sorry, is that, that's not what I said?
You said 1,200, but.
Oh, wow, okay. One with, and it has to be the registered weight. But in other words, what? But in other words, what, we would have to look up and see. So what's the make and model of the trailer?
It is a model year 2019, make is Peku, P-E-Q-U. Utility. And the plate number is D as in David, 83349. And it's black and it's the GVW on it, it's 7,000 pounds.
Well, that would be well within needed. Number of employees we talked about.
Yes.
So have you looked at the bylaw as far as the number of?
Yes, we have two, we have two full-time employees and we have one part-time. And all three of them work landscaping and all three of them work on the farm.
Okay, well. 80,000 square foot lot to 160,000 square foot lot, you're allowed two. You need to go to the 160 to have three.
I'm sorry, say that last part again, Lynn.
You have up to 160,000 square feet, which is what your three and a half acres is. You're allowed two employees. If it's over 160,000 square feet and greater than 300 feet of frontage, you're allowed three. What's the frontage on your lot? You have plenty of frontage, right?
Yes, I'm not quite sure, but I would say it's more than 300.
You've got 500.
That's what I thought it was for the, looking at that, just looking at the plan.
When you say, if I may, when you say you have three employees, are any of those residents on the property?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
He's trying to find a way for you. It's, it, it doesn't count people living on the premises.
I understand.
Have you updated your plot plan, your site plan that we need to approve?
Yes.
In other words, showing your screening and that sort of thing.
Yes, yes, Sheila dropped it off.
Okay. Have you folks picked it up?
Lee Ann sent that out to all of us.
Yeah, I got it.
I got it.
Okay. All right, so what do we see on the plot plan, folks? Do we see the screening of where the building is being taken down? Does it show a fence? Does it show?
No, it doesn't, but it kind of does. I mean, it's not totally different than the original one. There's a small line that you can see for the hedging. I don't see a fence on it. You didn't put a fence on it on this one though, right?
No, there was no fence on it. I just, you know, was only thinking about it recently. The screening that we talked about would be the arborvitae is on the front, just to make it kind of look somewhat decent. And then also at the back for the privacy for the neighbor. And then I was just thinking out of, you know, for my own security, just to put up a fence there along where the front of the house is and then run it in the side of the driveway where the side of the house is. And I have a gate there. I would keep the gate, probably move it closer six feet from where it is, but if not, just keep the gate, keep the post, everything else is going to stay there, just for security, that's all.
Does anybody in, any member of the board have a question about either the site plan or the special permit itself?
It's just no matter how you look at it, his, he doesn't come over the 1,600, the 160,000 square feet. It's like 118, no matter how you add up the numbers.
Well, could he add more to the backside into the orchard property?
Sure, sure.
I mean, I don't know exactly other, how to add it, other than the fact that we still own it and, you know, we're farming it and it's right there and one touches the other.
What you would need to do is carve out a piece on a plot plan and have it recorded. It would, it's not going to take a heck of a lot in back of the property that you have now to get you to the 160.
Actually, he needs a greater than 160,000 square feet.
Right.
Yeah, he's at 152,000 now, so I mean, it's essentially, he needs 8,000 square feet.
Excuse me, just a quick question. Is there any chance that this won't be allowed because of the conservation restriction?
Have you been to conservation?
No, 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 I don't mean here in town. I mean, Mr. Coddington's restriction. That I was given the impression that that would be very difficult to bend. The reason why we built this house on this property was because it would be difficult to build on, because we could not build on that.
I would say that there isn't an issue because the, you're not going to build on it.
No, okay.
Well, I, I think the question here is, this is, is it, you're saying conservation, but are you really talking conservation or are you talking about a 61A agricultural exemption on it?
I think you're talking about a Coddington restriction.
Yes.
I was just under the impression that this was larger than the town of Berlin, that it was kind of a but that it would be a greater issue to get it out of this restriction, that it's kind of forever in ironclad.
Yes, and it, it would still be in the restriction even if you add it to this lot.
We just need an extra 8,000 square feet area to add to this lot.
Right, and then you would be legitimate as far as three employees and two registered vehicles and a trailer for the company.
So if we're doing it once, why don't we, it, it would, might behoove us to then try to get five acres or something else, right?
I, I mean, that's up to you, okay?
Okay.
What we've run into in the past with a couple of situations is, yes, you have plenty of land in back, all right? That makes the lot very large or makes the property that you own very large. But we've had people, well, I might as well cite the, an exact example, the gas station down by 495 on the Westerly side. There was a lot of land on the opposite side of Taylor Road from the gas station that was considered part of the green area that allowed that gas station to be there. So they came, they got their site plan, everything, but it wasn't recorded that it was encumbered as being green area for the gas station. And that land got sold to its abbot. So we need to make sure that everything is clean cut. And I think going forward, again, the permit we give you would be for up to five years. And then you come back for a review for, for any kind of a home-based contracting business. The reason is because you're in a residential agricultural zone, even though it doesn't look like it. And we want to make sure that everyone adheres to the permit that they're given. And the best way to do that is to make it renewable and the state allows us to do that, so that's in the bylaw. If you notice, there was a whole section right in there, is the duration of a special permit. So this could come up again about the land area the next time you're here. There is a way to squash the whole thing. I mean, it's up to you. How do you feel about it, Mr. Byrne?
I mean, I would prefer that I didn't have to do it. Because I understand what we need to make this completely 100% legitimate. And I guess that's the only way to do it is to do it legitimate, do it right, because I have no problem going back every five years and just, you know, reapplying for my home base license or whatever it's called. I don't have a problem with that. We have nothing to hide here. We're right here on 62. I just would prefer not to have to do it. I would like to get the project started, get on the way, but clearly we need to.
Well, in all fairness, there would be nothing to prevent you right now from building that barn, from tearing down the house. That has nothing to do with your home-based contracting business. So if you wanted to go ahead and start preparing, you're going to need that barn anyway because, for agricultural purposes, correct?
Yes.
You're planning on tearing down that other house, are you not? So there's nothing to stop you from doing that.
Oh, okay. That, that's great. We'll, we'll go ahead and we'll have, so how do I go about doing that? I mean, do I need to?
I mean, I don't want to, I'm not a lawyer, okay? I'm just, my thought would be that you would need to just have a survey done and you would have a plan drawn up and it would show a piece of that other back property being added to the front property. But that's not something that, I don't know, is there anyone on the board that feels that they could provide some direction?
We have dealt with the registry with our wells and with the farm, I, you know, and getting things deeded and all that. I, all those things are great. If it's, if it's something allowed, that, that's fine, you know, we can work on that and if the, I guess we go back to the Conservation Commission and get the dogs. And I guess speak to them and get their.
Well, we require a letter from Conservation and it's just that it, they're not involved, is basically the letter you would get from them.
Oh, they, they got it. They sent it. They sent.
Okay, then you're talking about the encumbrance on your property.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
And I'm, I'm saying that my feeling is, and again, I'm not a lawyer, there's no reason that the planning board would not allow you to make that change.
Okay, so we'll go back to them.
I don't see why, okay? And I think you have a reasonably good relationship with the planning board. So you could do that and then you would not have any question about any, well, you would then be able to have three employees and two vehicles that tout your name.
Okay.
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 And, and you would have an opportunity to update the site plan to include, you know, row of arborvitae, whatever you're going to do and initial it and date it. So that we would have that as perhaps a final site plan.
To initial and date again.
Do you have the well and, as I remember, you have the well and you have the septic system on the map, right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so, and you need to show the parking, where are people going to park?
Okay, sure.
If you, if you have three employees, you're going to need your private parking by the house and parking for them. You could talk to the building inspector, okay? But my understanding would be that there is nothing required in order for you to tear down that house or and build a barn.
Well, I mean.
As far as the special permit goes, I mean, I don't know if the building inspector would have a different issue with it. But as far as the special permit goes, there's no stopping that.
Yes, just, but to get the, the, the building permit for the building from the building inspector, doesn't he need the green light from, from you?
Not if you're building a barn.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
And then as far as, you know, authorizing your business, that would come next and it would be that you're, you're going to give 25% of it, but that would be part of the special permit.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, I don't know how long it will take you to do this. I think you could do it within the month.
Well, we could, we'll make some calls and get back to you as soon as we can to let you know what they're, what we're being told and, and see what the timeframe is, if that's okay.
Well, I'd make the suggestion that we could entertain a motion to continue this hearing until next month. If and then you could give us an update at that time.
Okay, that would be great.
And, and then you won't have to, you know, go through a whole rigmarole. How do, how do my colleagues feel? Does that seem like a reasonable thing to do, folks?
Yes.
Yep.
That's all I really need is to make the, this plot plan a little bit bigger.
That's right.
Okay.
And again, in order to do that, we would need for you to request it. And if you request it, you'll need to sign some paperwork just extending the time of the hearing. You'd have to go down and see Lee Ann.
Okay.
So would someone?
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until July 9th at 7:00 PM.
We're sorry about that. There was, everyone's busy, but it was Wednesday nights and, you know.
So you know where to go to find the link to get on board, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you know that it's going to be seven o'clock.
Yes.
And we generally, sometimes not in July, but this time we are in July, meet the second Wednesday of the month. So sometimes that's easier to remember. But again, you can always look in and you can see all of the meetings, the planning board, everybody. That's where they post their meetings. Okay, I have a motion. Who's taking minutes?
I guess I am.
Okay, okay, Jim. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sucker.
Any further discussion? Yes, Jenny is second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call. Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Present.
I'm sorry?
Present.
Jenny?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we will see you next month at 7:00. If you can, please prepare well, re-prepare the site plan. And if for some reason, I would even go so far as to say, unless my colleagues have a problem with it, if you were having issue with getting it recorded or whatever, but you had it surveyed or had the map ready, we could do it subject to the recording of that, if that makes sense to you.
Yes.
So we will allot you as much time as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would suggest you speak to the building inspector about, you know, demolition and construction and I think you'll find that you'll be in good stead because if you're putting up a barn, it doesn't involve a special permit at all. The portion of the barn being used will be a subject of the special permit.
Yes, okay.
See you next month.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry, who spoke?
Uh, I, I did, I just had a question, so. We're, we're treating this as though it's a new business. Doesn't he already have the trucks and employees on site? Um, the town inspector hasn't found you in violation of your current. Special permit, I take it?
Well, I was not going to mention that, but I'm sure that they will continue to do what they're doing until such time as. We reach a decision.
I see, okay.
Because it, it's been a long time and there are quite a few people in town that. Are doing the same thing.
Uh, move that we close this hearing.
No, 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 you want to continue.
Continue it.
Oh, okay, so it's continued.
We, we just did that, we just continued it until.
Ignore me.
We try to, but it's not easy. Okay, so much for that. We had, um. What else, Jeff? We had.
You guys are welcome to stay, but I'm gonna bump you down to attendees and off of the panelists now, so have, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, the one remaining thing that I would like to resolve tonight, if we can. Is the reorganization of the, of the board. Is there someone that has absolutely no interest in being? An officer that would. Uh, act as chair while we do our reorganization?
I have no interest in being an officer, so I can be the chair.
Okay. This is how it will go, Pat. I will hand over the chairmanship. Uh, to you. And you will say, I'll entertain. Uh, motions for a chair for fiscal F Y twenty-six.
Yep.
And then someone will make a motion, and then you'd say, are there any other nominees?
Okay.
And if not, um, then you say, we have one nominee or whatever. And you'll say, um, take a vote and do it by, um.
Roll call.
Okay?
Yep.
So I'll hand things over to Pat to act as chair while we. Elected chairman.
Okay, so the first thing is we have, I'm going to. Uh, ask if anyone would like to entertain a motion. To nominate someone as. The chair for the zoning board of appeals for the fiscal year two oh two six.
I will.
Okay.
Who'd you like to nominate?
Jenny, who would you like to nominate?
I would like to nominate Lynn.
I'll second that.
Lynn, would you take the position? Do I have to ask you that or just vote on it?
You'd be best not to ask.
No kidding.
All right, let's vote quick, vote quick.
Vote quick. All right, we're gonna have a roll call vote for Lynn as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the fiscal year of two oh two six. Keith, would you like to vote?
I'm an eye for Lynn.
Okay. I assume I get to vote, so I'm an eye for Lynn. Jim?
Hi.
Okay, Jenny?
I'm an eye for Lynn.
Okay, and Danny, can you hear me?
Hi.
Okay, he's an eye. All right, and Lynn, do you have to vote for yourself or you just?
I'll vote present.
Okay, all right, so it's unanimous decision that Lynn is now going to be chair for the fiscal year of two oh two six. Now, do we do this for the vice chair as well or just you?
Well, now I can take my chairmanship back.
Oh, all right, I'll give it right back to you.
Okay, I'll entertain motions for a vice chair. For F Y twenty-six.
Oh, in my new position, I'm gonna nominate Jim Royer for vice chair.
And I'm going to second it.
There you go.
Did you get that down, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For Jim Royer as vice chair. Uh, I'm an eye, Keith?
Hi.
Uh, Dennis?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Okay, and I'll ask you, Jim.
Uh, I was abstained.
Now you'll vote present, okay? Okay, um, I'm trying to think, do we have a secretary listed? I don't think so, do we?
No, that has gone to.
I sense we have Leanne, yeah, I, I don't think we have one. So, okay. Uh, thank you, folks, for your vote of confidence in Jim and I, I hope that.
What about Danny's clerk? Does he get voted in?
We voted years ago, we may need to update it, but.
You have an honorary position.
We, we voted. Sit, no, we voted him single signatory.
Ah, okay.
That means he can sign bills for the zoning board of appeals in between our meetings. And then he has to bring them to us at the next meeting. So you see, when we have warrants on our agenda. It means that anything that Danny has done. Uh, anything that has been paid. Okay. He needs to just report to us. But we, there is a law in Massachusetts that allows a board to have a signal, single signatory. And we voted that several years ago.
That's good. I didn't want him to lose the position.
Can I resign this position?
No. Permanent.
Please.
You didn't know what you. You didn't know what your title was, single signatory, huh?
Yeah. I wish somebody else would take it.
No, thank you, Dennis. Thank you for doing it.
Well, it gives you an excuse to down and shake them up down at the town hall, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? Did we ever hear from Leanne what, um. During the night? No, okay.
Yeah, so well, she actually put the new agenda up, because it didn't go through on the computer, so she did send out an email this morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, guys, anything that else do we want to, um. Adjure the meeting?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn until next month.
I will second.
Okay.
That was quick.
Any discussion being no discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Keith?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
And I'm an eye.